Welcome, everybody. Mayor Dennis Moore, this is the 24th day of January 2022. This is our 24th council meeting. The US State Department.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. There's probably like a horse's hands. One nation under God. And this will be the very end of this problem.
Mr. Lanza. Ms. Thatcher, present.
Ms. Cheney.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Grant Warner.
Here.
I'm aware that there is a couple of amendments for a second session to be to our agenda. Mr. Don, please.
Yeah, I would like to say this session. We can discuss matters of purchase and sale of those things.
Yeah, as to the agenda. Is there a question to approve for these problems?
Motion to approve, ask my head.
Second. I was prepared.
Hi.
I don't have anyone listed as registered to speak to council proceedings. Anybody else can advise. Right, so we had this to approve from January 10th. Not the amendments, but it was. If not, is there a question?
Motion to approve.
Second. I was prepared. Hi. My understanding is that the chief will, our hard chief will not be here this evening. I heard that there was a report that he submitted. I did not see that in the packet. He said.
Yeah, it's actually on the website. Under council packets, and then it is with. The Almanac Fire Force package for 1922. So his method of reporting is a little bit different than what Chief Timbers was. There's an actual narrative that's in the end of the packet. They'll talk specifically about various runs across the various communities that are sort of by Little Miami. And then he gives out the things regarding notable emergency events, trainings, vehicles, building projects, capital expenses, meetings, and stuff of those kinds of things.
Mr. Earth, we're discussing earlier how we'd read it. I don't know if politically state is correct, but we've read it that he wasn't the chief. That this was not good. That this report is so good, we wish we were giving this kind of a report for a while. So I think not to table for a report. It's well done, and we appreciate that. So I've got a number of things going into the mayor's report here. Okay, first off, I want to extend an apology to anyone watching the video feed of our previous council meeting. I've viewed the video today and noticed that we made it here on which video feed to use in council. I've looked at the entire visual feed of the video of our January 10th council meeting plus the illustrator's keyboard. You could have, you could have good audio throughout it, so you can still listen to the council meeting. Like only video of it is keyboard. So on behalf of council administration, I apologize for that. Mistakes happen over many, instead of technologies as we go. Want to start off tonight recognizing that last week was Martin Luther King Day. Martin Luther King Junior Day is the only holiday designated as a day of service to encourage all Americans to volunteer to improve their communities according to the National Museum of American History and Culture. In observance of the national holiday, schools, government agencies, businesses, banks are closed each year on the third Monday of January as our administration offices were. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a pastor and civil rights leader who dedicated his life to achieving racial equality. The only thing that was inseparable from a beginning from denuded poverty through all. Team helping with nice peaceful rallies boycotts. Boycotts to improve the social change. King's example of improving community assistance on nonviolence in this effort. Continue to influence many activists pursuing the actualization of civil rights and social change today. In his now famous letter from Hurricane Dale, Dr. King writes him, any nonviolent campaign, there are four basic steps. One, collection of facts to determine whether injustices exist. Two, negotiation. Three, self purification. And four, join in action. King and his fellow activists conducted workshops training people and incorporate this into their community action. Dr. King learned, we repeatedly asked ourselves, are we even able to accept those for mental retaliation? Are we able to endure the ordeal in jail? Following workshops, they conducted their nonviolent social protests, citizens had lunch counters, healings, healings of African Americans, appalling churches, other forms of social protest. Dr. King's message was consistently balanced between meditation and call to greater love. He was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for his work in 1964, assassinated four years later on April 4th, 1916. He was 39 years old. He would have turned 33 much earlier, 15th this year. One of Dr. King's most famous quotes is that, "Life's the most persistent and urgent question if it is worthy to live for others." I have two pageful of other famous quotes of his that I could record. Happy Martin Luther King Day to everyone. I hope yours was filled with the spirit of that federal holiday to encourage the actualization of community better. I have a proclamation honoring former council member, Ariya Pradhanoff, for his service to the community. I'll notify the council likely by email. Perhaps we can put something on the website. He and I have decided on a location and date and time, so those of you who would like to attend can do so. I want to maximize the attendance of Ariya's friends and family when I present the proclamation, so I'm working to get a good location and date to do that. For tonight, I have a proclamation recognizing January 23rd, 2022, Gulfman Choice Week of Manner. This proclamation coincides in part with CPS Magnus School Lottery, which is held from December 7th, 2021 until March 11th this year. In our region, there are 14 Magnus schools that have seats available that are filled via lottery system, which you can submit your applications until March 11th. There is a link to CPS website that explains this process as a video to produce the application required. That's all I'm reporting. There are also a number of private schools which are available to our residents in this close, pleasant, rich, amongst our area via the state school voucher system. So many parents are busy right now navigating the process of all their students still in 2022, 2023. So here. Andrew Campinella, who was president of the non-for-profit National School Choice Organization, requesting this proclamation. Notes that the mission of this organization is to raise awareness of effective K-12 options for children, focusing equally on traditional public schools, public charter schools, public Magnus schools, private schools, online schools, and public schools. And here's the proclamation. Whereas all children of Gulf Manner should have access to the highest quality as soon as possible, whereas Gulf Manner recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students to Gulf Manner. To be successful adults, whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Gulf Manner. Whereas Gulf Manner residents have a multitude of high-quality public and non-private, non-alcoholic schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who are teaching their children at home. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the livelihoods of our community. Whereas Gulf Manner has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings where committed to educating their children. Whereas school choice week is celebrated across the country by colleges, students, parents, educators, schools, organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options now therefore. High-Studens Moore, Mayor, the coach Gulf Manner by virtue of a 30 best in the league, but which charter constitution laws provide in the states here by reference, January 23rd, 2022, as Gulf Manner's school choice week. And call this service to the attention of citizens. We are complaining of this 24th day of January to. Want to congratulate Jury L. Grisby and Marcus Fitz on their marriage two weeks ago. At the honor of presiding over the ceremony. It's one of the best things I do as mayor and want to thank them for including me. And I remind folks, the Hamilton County Probate Court has a list of those that can perform marriages in Hamilton County. Their contact information provided in the link to my report. We'll note that I'm on that list and happy to help anyone out that needs someone to do it. We're on this notice. Congratulations again to Jury L. Marcus. Want to follow up that COVID test kit availability for anyone who isn't aware of how to get free at-home COVID-19 test kits. There's a newly completed government website that allows every home in the U.S. order for free at-home COVID-19 test kits. The tests are clearly free and will usually ship within seven to 12 days. You may also get additional free at-home COVID-19 test kits from your local store or pharmacy starting January 15th. Most people with health insurance can additionally go to a pharmacy or store to purchase an at-home COVID account or COVID-19 diagnostic test at no cost, either through reimbursement or free of charge. This applies whether you purchased your health plan upon your own or whether you get health insurance for your job. Make sure the test kit you purchased is fully authorized by the U.S. Department of Administration. As long as it is authorized, test kits are fully reimbursable. If you are charged for your test kit, be sure to keep your receipt to submit a claim to your insurance company for reimbursement. If you're planning to set up a network, I prefer providers at which you can obtain a test kit with no out-of-pocket expenses. You can still obtain test kits from other retailers outside that network. Insurance companies are required to reimburse you at a rate of $12 per individual test or cost of the test of less than $12. They are not allowed to design their reimbursement process in a way that the population would be in person. Health plans must cover eight individual at-home over-the-counter COVID-19 tests per person through a roll in the plan monthly. That means a family of four can get 32 tests per month for free. Note that tests may be packaged individually or with multiple tests in one package. For example, the two tests packaged in one month. Plans are required to cover eight tests or cover individuals per month regardless of how they are packaged and issued. If you are charged for your test, keep your receipt, submit a claim to your health plan for reimbursement. You can find out directly for a good claim. How to submit reimbursement claims will not need a prescription or a note from your provider unless you need more than eight kits from. The prices that these kits have skyrocketed. As you probably know, I mentioned in my previous report that we were looking at getting some kits in bulk to try to reduce the cost for the administration. And you hire this residence that more than the free kits that are offered. The pricing I found was $11 a kit if you made a $3,000 investment. However, delivery time toward it is three to five months, which I would fix. Want to thank Sergeant Reed Administration for their efforts in pursuing more information on this and their efforts. To get the test kits, which have, I was notified today that we're running for a month in 95 passes. So I'm hoping to contact the community management and security office to get some more for our staff and use of visitors, the building, and residents that. Because of the surge in cases and the effects that this happened on our system infrastructure, Hamilton County commissioners declared a state of emergency on the 11th. Consequently, Hamilton County Emergency Management and Security has returned to doing weekly reports for the officials. Have a copy of the most recent report to pass around so you can see what that looks like. These reports shifted to being sent out once a month over the summer, but I'm now back to a weekly update, so I'll be including that in my report. I asked administration to do a copy in color because I'm going to pass this around. They do a green, yellow, red kind of system. They give the explanation for, you know, why we're in that situation in the fridge area. I think it's pretty cool for a word, so I want to make sure you guys saw what that looks like. So there's a question to pass that along if you listen to this. Certainly, everyone would just. I'm sure the chief already does, please. I'm delaying the reformation of our community engagement. We have our B.A. with our strategic plan advisor. They're talking about administration, maybe that's going to be with them next two weeks. I see this committee is taking on a large goal of getting community input for our strategic plan and disseminating information about it to our residents. Want that goal well defined and early launch it. I'm planning on having Vice Mayor Sharon Chaney, Chair the Committee, and Mrs. Snodder, and Mr. Fisher, as our other elected officials on the committee. I think it is ill-advised to form a committee without a clearly stated purpose. And indeed, I found even when a committee has a clearly stated purpose, if the members of the committee are all not into that purpose, the community is of course less effective. So I want to state a purpose and goals of the community engagement committee to be very clear to everyone. I've been discussing with our legal counsel and administration over the past year on having a training for newly elected officials specifically on the process of how ordinances and resolutions come into being from start to finish. This was actually, I think, the first written report by Mr. Van Poren. The Center for Local Government has a great series of online trainings on sunshine, laws, ethics, relationship between elected officials and administration, which I at least do review a lot of. And Mr. Earth can direct you on how to sign up for those trainings, which I helped virtually be assumed on our gateway by a coalition. I see these trainings as a requirement for our elected officials, if not by the law, by the spirit of the duties of service to our communities. So please follow up with Mr. Earth about getting signed up for these trainings. Mr. Earth, Vice Mayor and I have spoken about the possibility of having like a luncheon hour where those interested can do these trainings together. Call for trainers to link up on the big screen. And having where, having one where we have our legal counsel, Terry or Ealing or another, come in to do that in person for review of speaking up on the process of how ordinances and resolutions come into being from start to finish. The idea of this type of training is so that the great ideas each of you have for building better community in the village can be expediated and actualized upon efficient, which I agree with this. I'll be attending the signing ceremony for the Transit Infrastructure Fund with the administration. The details about who all can attend is still in question given the whole COVID has an excellent number of people that can safely be in a mask gathering. If you're interested in attending, administration or I will be posted on how old the invite is as we gain more clarity about it. And actually, I meant to do this at the very front, but this is the final piece. I was notified today of a fire that occurred in our district that injured a number of people. Unfortunately, one of them died today from injuries. On behalf of the village of Gulf Manner, I want to extend our solidarity to families and those who can be affected by this tragic loss, as well as to firefighters and leadership of the local fire district. Why don't by virtue of their profession, take this type of loss very well.
Sure. So this, we all know, continues. One thing I want to recognize, frankly, very again, is the heart and soul that our employees put in protecting our residents and making sure the services happen. Last Monday and Sunday, when we had a snow event over in the, our, with the 10-day weekend, Mr. Lanza became then to assist Jason and Joe in doing the snow removal that particular day. And then inadvertently, they were all exposed by COVID. And that took out our, almost our entire service department for an entire week. But they persisted, they got their jobs done, the village was covered, they had a plan in place in case we had that big snow on Wednesday, which fortunately didn't materialize. I want to thank Andy, he takes this very personally. He's a good supervisor with that crew, Jason and Joe get out there and get the work done with us. Also in addition, Brian, Andy Guinness, Maybach, and Paul Anderson, they've done an excellent job putting themselves in peril. But the, the good thing is that everybody's well and back to work this week. Also want to recognize we've had several of our police officers in and out through the Omicron issue. And again, we thank that group for everything that they had to deal with the past, going on three years now of COVID. So I will give them all a round of applause. I think thank you. Which is why everybody needs to be wearing these now, on forward still. So that continues. I want to remind everybody that records and management training needs to be done. Council members are responsible for making sure that either you go yourselves or have a designate meeting. We do have legislation this evening, that whole point was broken and has been held as council does its needs for training. Although when that training becomes available, if any individual they want to go to or want to do that, we'll make sure you're aware of that that happens. Just a reminder, the Records Commission will meet on Monday, February 14th, with the 5:30 P.M. prior to the next executive committee meeting, very expected by Valentine's Day. The Financial Audit Committee will convene prior to the next Finance Committee meeting on February 28th. At that point in time, we should have information when you're in close, maybe we'll talk about that, but there is more to report to see. The other thing that I wanted to mention is we still need to get our border tax review together. Nothing really happened the last two weeks on that. I think you gave some of the money in terms of money that you were recommending to apply for those positions. So in the minutes last time, and in this time, we're going to leave qualifications in there. So if you find somebody or you want to talk about somebody, you can just do it in real succinct. Qualifications are something to get on the board to review. If you remember, if you remember, two members are appointed by the village council. You can also appoint an alternate, another is appointed by the mayor. Mr. Allen, do you have anything to add to that?
We just do it, the eyes across the season and those three opportunities to guard. I'm sure we want to hear about that. It's important, we'll get that running again.
Okay. Excuse me, is the tax records, they online or is that career? The tax records training, does that help?
No, the, the.
I'm sorry, there's a tax records training?
No, there's a public records training.
Oh, okay.
It's open meetings and form of records training. The general's office offers a three-hour course, no cost, and they run it directly through the region. You have responsibility as officials to attend during charts during. But you can also designate someone to attend on the air. There is a benefit of having all in these designated, because the mayor in-house for repetition goes up. So what we do in all the talk meetings is designate someone to satisfy the audit requirements when we cut through with the records commission and everything else. But we would also encourage you if you want to, it's a three-hour training on code use over there.
Yeah, the question was whether it was held on live or in protection.
It's usually in person.
Okay.
Facility with.
Okay.
I had, sorry, I had mentioned in our previous meeting that I support the idea of us designating two staff members to be here, designate needs for that. Also feel that's important, we have at least more of our council members that are listening to as well or translate for us when issues come up. I'm happy to do it, but I have to look at some of those people. And the border tax review, Mr. Earth also mentioned something we need to have in place. Fortunately, we're going to put a lot of other deals. We need to have that in place, you know, to file on the conversation.
Okay, to follow up on the mayor's comments regarding elected officials' training, I sent each of you an email today that outlines the several room training that's available. As the mayor mentioned, the village will pay for this, so you need to schedule this. Either you're installed and let me know so we don't pay for it, or do it through my office. The one thing that we would like to do is, is if this is helpful for you and Vice Mayor was interested in doing this, but we can set up the chambers to do a luncheon hour, over day lunch. You can do this together with the other folks. It's a two-hour luncheon hour. I've reserved the room for these dates, so just over the next couple of days, if you can get back in touch with me, I'm looking at what we're going to do about those. The other thing that I've given each of you, this was recommended by the city administrator at Amberly Village. It's a practical guide for newly elected officials called GALL ONE. I skimmed it, it looks like there's some really interesting things in here. There's also online through the Secretary of State's office in Village and book that you can read, which also explains some of the things that go on within the village. The thing to remember is that each community is a little bit different animal from the others. So we do a lot of things that are a lot of what comes through the Secretary of State, the County General's Office, but then everything's exactly the way it is for us right now. That's the value of that just following the personal, personal perspective and personality. Let's see. We are working with Deer Park Silverton in Little Miami Fire Rescue District on transition of fire EMS services. The way things are situated at the moment is we will transition at 6:00 a.m. on Monday, March, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, March 1st. So to do that at midnight would be in the middle of the show, they're not going to do that. So we will be online at Deer Park Silverton at 6:11, Monday, March 1st. The evening before, we will have a council meeting here on that night, on February 28th. Hopefully, it's a brief meeting that evening, because what we would intend to do is to head over to the base to have a reception. We're inviting the other, the old chiefs back, Mike Gunn, Chief Putoff, Chief Greg Baumann. We're also inviting all the farmer workers, also including all the little Miami folks who are there currently. Hopefully, this will be an opportunity for us to thank everybody for their service over the years to Station 47 and start our new relationship with Deer Park Silverton and possibly play. Speaking of that, we would like to schedule a town hall meeting. The purpose of that would be to explain to our residents the decision to switch from Little Miami to Deer Park Silverton. In addition to that, we're going to need to explain how financing is going to work. We'll have a discussion about that a little later in Mr. Bell's portion of the evening. But we have talked about some dates. We'll go into the strategic planning stuff here now. I threw out Tuesday, February 8th. I'm starting wrong again. Thursday, February 10th, Tuesday, February 22nd, and Thursday, February 24th as possible dates to either do our strategic plan or our virtual online meeting. It makes sense to try and do the strategic plan either on February 8th or February 10th, earlier in the month, so we can get that ready up and running. And then I would like to be able to do the town hall a little bit later, just so trying to ensure that rather than just the COVID serving party on the line. So from the 8th to the 10th for the strategic plan, when takeers, which date do we have a motion for which day we would do that planning session?
So Tuesday, the 10th is a Thursday. Okay, both are either.
So for Mr. Fisher, since you weren't here, the first one of this will be. So for Mr. Fisher, since you weren't here, the first one, this will be the elected officials and the people who are on the committees will be invited to sit around like us. And we have a facility there, and we'll talk the various concepts that were discussed in the first meeting. And then basically take our discussion to the things to, let's put it that way, explain. We'll provide data to come over. Thoughts on which date? About 10 of the day or the time? I believe Mr. Kinnip needs to have a 6:30 start call, is that correct, or has that changed?
It would be helpful.
So we would do probably 6:30 to 8:30.
If it's on Thursday, I could do any time.
We have the transit.
On Thursday, anytime, as long as.
So the 10th is the infrastructure we know, which is time, that's right. So the reminder to you, 6:30 PM, this is a strategic polling session, this is the day, February 8th. Do we have a motion? Some moves?
I'm second.
Mr. Earth, did you send out the thing again? Was it supposed to be taken about again, from the business or something? Wasn't there like a pre?
Yeah, there was a.
There was a solid fight, it was on the last part. If you could send it out again, just to kind of, sure, yeah.
So the next one would be the virtual community town hall. Mr. Donald and I had a discussion about that. There would be no decisions made in that particular meeting. So it's allowable that we're able to do that as a Zoom call. But I would addition, based on what's happening with COVID, definitely we can have this room set up with social distancing. We have people to attend, or if it's a limited number, like we have here this evening, we can take reservations for people who are in the meeting. Not sure exactly how that will work yet, but I think it makes sense to try to do this on Thursday, February 24th. That's the latest date that we have. This again would be the best of the, yeah, and then probably our. We can do it at 6 o'clock on Thursday, February 24th. Do we have a motion?
Some moves?
Second. Five.
Objection. Okay. Moving along, appreciate that. Road Tracker. One idea here that will work along with the website. So as we talked before, our service department does a great job keeping our roads clean. And one of the things that we would like to do is to be able to rank the last and have this little information to people that are always happy. As that's what the law wants to do, tested this, which I did as part of our blog, the rank of last two events that we had. But basically, I posted what the report was, what weather forecast was. And then, for instance, on, this was Sunday, January 16th, it's about 12:00. We updated that Andy Maybach was in, Jason, he was in, he was in our house for an assault on streets, like freezing, it was all. People should be moved off the road, off the street, maybe throw a message, let's move it to the block. We will continue to update on a semi-regular basis during this, as such. Having it in the blog is a great place for it, however, more effective if it's on our webpage as instead of highway. This is what we're going to do, so when you look at this, when you see your list as road tracker, I'm aware that it's current. It is what's happening, if roads are to show up, it's fine. So there's a lot of things, most of it is perfected, that we can do with this going forward from the fall, we can have. He tracked her. So the idea is to try and get more information out. Also, we want to start going back in terms of using social media with. Chris is looking at me tweeting from this council, I can't remember where the police department. And all of this can be looked at.
I was discussing with the administration today, the technology's not familiar with where, I have to appreciate what we have heard of social media. I would look at posting on, maybe that we reposted automatically from every single social media. It's more than that.
Two things that have come up that I've talked to Mr. Van Par about that I'd like the record committee to start looking into. One of those is control of Airbnb, I suppose they're not moving more. We understand that there are, we have the rest of the county that will inform you that there are people who are renting homes, who are using that as Airbnb's. I don't know, I don't know where any specific problems that we're having. I know there's a report over the weekend that are concerned about people in some areas. But when things like that happen, this is going to be a matter of time that I've talked about. The first place for us to go is to the police department, because those are violations of our ordinances. Especially when it comes to parking issues, noise issues, disruptions, building, like this kind of things. We want to make sure first of all that people aren't just complaining that there's Airbnb tents happening across the street, and the police department aren't going to notify of that. Because we need to make sure that there really is an issue that needs to be addressed. Secondly, the mayor will talk about today, if there are BNB tents going on in the village, we have the authority, the right to control what's happening. And there may be things that we want to look at, some license systems came from for those kinds of operations. If you think about it, the people, the many communities where hotels are being used, which is basically what Airbnb is, they're easily, they're a whole unit. Those are the kinds of things that we need to do a fairly deep research or die there to stay in, kind of, for all the kinds of. Meaning ultimately, with this side, if there's not a greater control, I think it's something because it's becoming, something that's happening more frequently, we need to look at.
But the, it's very much behind the fees and all that, you know, I'm trying to answer that question already. We're all discussing, but the piece that I'm fairly certain of is having at least something in place for neighborhood residents, that if there's an issue, say, we probably have some things on the books about noise, residences. If there's complaints, but maybe, maybe else, some kind of practice to address that.
I just looked, and there's one in the village.
Really?
I just looked for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Shut up now, so the mayor shut it off.
There's a, there's a block of buildings at 2437 Vera, that every unit is an Airbnb.
Are we getting complaints though?
They don't show up in the app for rent. That's the only town, but yeah.
How do we know that they are in the national?
I just searched weekends from now until July, and there's only one available.
Are they, is their book?
Uh, it's on Albert.
Ah. So their books didn't show?
No, but every single weekend for the, for the next seven months.
So.
Either way.
Maybe you need to lower your search criteria.
Supposed to be covered, too, like, as a way.
Well, that's, that's our, so.
Okay, remember, we've done that.
We discussed it.
So I think we look at this from a quality of life perspective. If you know that you have a house to store that is being rented by a property owner, what is, how is that going to affect neighbors on your street and property values if you've got transient people coming through all the time? Transient kind of has a negative kind of connotation, I mean, probably perfectly, like, people who are transitive. But if, if there are parties that are around, who's, who's, you know, from the name, control that in the house. Like I said before, maybe there will be what's on the issue that we do it about, but it's something, I'll just take the book with me. I'm sure there are people that this is something, I think, well, already this is.
It's a huge problem, a lot of units, because that's the definition of a hotel. And we're watching that's 3%, 60% here now. It's a lot, there's, they, they should, that, I guess that is, that, but it's. Also the house, it's not good. Oh, we're figuring out. So a lot of this is asking. If it's a part, if it's a, it's a thousand, like, hurting. It's a lot, having control, having to know that what is our interest in points, that's, very easy, it's up to.
I think that touches into the conversation that we had about, I hope this is, so it's, I'm, I'm like, love to have that discussion. Okay, let's.
I didn't prepare for this, but off the top of my head, this block of buildings, I think I misspoke, I said 2437, it's 2537. There's five buildings that are single bedroom efficiencies. And I'm aware of three separate instances where people stay there for work for two or three months. And the reports we've taken are items missing out of these Airbnbs. Somebody put a camera in and saw somebody coming through their Airbnb after using the door code. It's supposed to be cleaning up the units after the people leave. Taken three reports like that. Somebody caught a person trying to climb through a window because they thought the unit had been vacated. So, and then the issue we have from enforcement standpoint is, three reports I'm familiar with, that people wanted to report it to us. They had the offense on video, but they weren't going to be in town to prosecute. So they let us know to be aware, but then they moved on. And we have this, and we're aware of, but we don't have a victim we can bring to court.
So the, the kind of complaints are theft, like, it's not really the neighbors complaining, it's the owners?
It's the, the people that have, I'm aware of three reports from this, this area where their units were entered improperly, items were stolen.
Okay, so owners were tenants, rented. Tenant, to be clear, I'm sorry. The red letter.
The Airbnbers.
So it is the Beaters that are there.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so it's, it's not coming from outside, it's Beaters that are, that are from this, but then. My concern was, you know, maybe sort of about being able to, you know, being able to force, being able to protect people in general. Right. I did, I was getting the sense that maybe complaints from neighbors about, as was said, that there's more activity here. We want people to be the same as we produced it, there's this disciple, people say, we're not getting this kind of.
I haven't heard those yet, but this is, this is a newer entity that just started. So I'm, I'm concerned that, I'm aware of three reports already.
So there was a little bit incident that took place on the Gray's Hall. I talked to Sergeant Green on Saturday, he was not aware of a report having been.
I saw you.
I was gonna say that.
I saw that email.
Okay. So I think it does come, we don't have specific facts, but something else would replace, but those are the kinds of things that was something that happened. We didn't have the capability to also figure residents, including, there's often like, those who have. So we do have, currently under our ordinance, is the property, almost any, for two new sets, we're having, that would need to cite the property. We use that in addition to, I don't know if they, if they, will, or is it all of that? Because it's, there's no living there, but.
Well, it sounds like. It is, but yeah. It's taxing, it's why it's, it's the information I've heard from who's there. It seems like the, the big thing is the lost red, you know, somewhere, you know, if you're on a day-to-day, and we're taxing their houses, and we're not able to tax these guys, we don't even know that it's happening. It seems to be the, this, the. It may be that's the issue, but I would tend to, we want to do a, as part of it. There is still a competing, it's this property, it's not very straight out, I can see that, maybe the taxes are on that. So it's a balance that the mayor exists, it's trying to track. But we'll keep our eyes out on what other users start to do, because again, I know it's a big problem, I think it's very, I think it's part of the wrestling.
So a whole pretty, it's up to. The other, next thing I want to talk a little bit about is the Human Rights Commission. So with the appointment of our four members, we still have one position that's open. And I don't, I know everyone reached out to me the last two weeks, and I think the mayor has been working on and looking for a candidate for that position. With that in mind, we're going to schedule the orientation, the folks that have been appointed to that for Tuesday, March 1st. And that would be at, I can't really.
Question? Tuesday, March 1st?
Correct.
It's anticipated now, or?
I would say in four, because we got a new agenda, the kind of things, but they will do, it's, I think we talked about doing a review of the ordinance itself. Having them elect their chair and their vice chair, hopefully we'll have a fellow person that is, so that person can be considered for that. We're looking at having a content expert possibly available. So there's a number of things that we can do, we've got a little bit over a month to plan on that, so I think the important thing is on the books, you know, we have something to do. I've asked Mr. Lanza to start conducting a monthly meeting for economic development with staff. In addition to that, I've also asked him to start the next council meeting. But I don't know if we'll do this month later, or for every council meeting, or do a council month, but to start before, before the economic development issues as a part of the council report. I will have some information during our executive session to talk about that. Another project that dates, suffice it to say, nothing new on Dura at the moment, nothing new on the playground, and nothing new on the emergency in the roads. The only thing with Dura is they have continued to try to work through the bad weather. Today is a difficult challenge, and it looks like it's taking form more in a week or so, so they're going to continue to try and get some of the detail stuff they can care of. So we're in position that if the weather does break, we might ask all that, all be done as quickly as possible. That is my report, if you've heard any questions. If you've just heard any questions. Mr. Lanza.
Yes, several things here. One thing I just want to remind this council of, and I mentioned at the last meeting, typically at the finance meetings, I provide a financial, a commentary about the financial package The way we generate the financial package is on the annual reconciliation each month, but they can't complete the December reconciliation until we close this year, twenty-one months books. And we have until February twenty-eight, my state auditor, to do all of the work necessary to get that finished. Now, I, my goal is to have it, my goal is to have it completed by the next finance meeting. We're all about them, but I just want to make sure that it's not ready to go, as an annual solution. We requested at the last council meeting, and the county auditor estimate on ten mills for the ten mil replacement levy, there's, I think there's nothing that we're going to discuss this evening in greater detail, but I did want to make the body aware that we did receive that valuation back this afternoon, and it came in at four hundred and five thousand dollars, which is where we forecasted it on our O M N, that's me. So it, it meets, it meets what we are goal, and we should have no problem covering your fire or the MS contract. The other item is, is the, the sheriff's heard, requested that I bring a discussion, I provide discussion about the levies, the property tax levies for the village. The current, so there are two, two ways we can set levies on the ballot, or levies to be approved. One is what's called a continuous levy, in that once it's approved, it will remain on the books until the village decides to approve it. An example of a continuous levy is the lease levy that's authorized, because that's implied, that is continuing, I mean, each year, the village will continue to generate revenue off that levy, without it ever being approved by the levies. The other way is for a levy to go for the, the other way is for, let me say, terms. The terms historically, they've both been five years, I think that's in accordance with county auditors' requirements. And we currently have four general fund levies on, that have been approved, each of the five-year term. We have one levy that will need to be approved, well, a decision will need to be made by council, whether to put that levy on the ballot, because it will expire this year. It is a, let's see, a four-mill general fund levy. Current estimation on valuation for four mills is a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, and that will expire this year. So again, we'll need a decision when we put that back on the ballot, for that industry. But there are four general fund levies. One was authorized, a two-mill was authorized in twenty sixteen. Four-mill I just mentioned before was authorized in November twenty seventeen. A two-mill was on the ballot twenty eighteen, and a seven-mill was just approved a few years ago, re-approved just a few years ago, so it was, it was authorized in twenty eighteen. So, two other levies, like I mentioned before, the lease levy was continuing, that was authorized, last authorized in November eighth, two thousand and five, and there is a ten-year street and sidewalk levy that was authorized in twenty sixteen. I haven't answered any questions about any of those financial items on the staffs. All right. The other items, I wanted, we touched on updates to the, they're going to provide updates for road, snow emergencies, when the service department gets called out by the county to address snow removal. The service department, the guys at the service department created this map, I think we're going to formalize and update it, make it look a little more spiffy, put it on the website. But what this map does is it breaks down each road, each street in the village, and then color codes it based on priority. Now, we have two priorities. Priority one is in pink here, and the second priority is the, I call it yellow, or kids call it green. But priority two, well, priority one, priority, that's the two priority, one and priority two, isn't that one, the, the second level priorities don't get addressed? It's that the priority one streets typically have two trucks operating all them, clearing out snow, because those are the main corridors in the village. The police department and the fire department rely on those routes getting cleared during winter weather, weather movements. And the streets with that is significant rain, so it's a safety issue. Second, priority two are more level streets, and I'm happy to go through, and answer questions on which street is on a level two. But I'm happy to have that discussion on, this, the priority two streets are more level, less road traffic, those typically just have one truck continues to operate, clears. I will, yeah, look for that, we will get that on the website, and hopefully we'll be able to resource residents as they ponder snow removal operations. That's the end of my.
Mr. Lanza, any questions? Chief Campbell.
Yeah, I just have an activity report this evening. For the month of December, police department responded to four hundred eighty-six calls for service. Those resulted in thirteen criminal incident reports. Totals for the year were four thousand and sixty-two calls for service made by the police department, which generated two hundred and fourteen criminal offense reports, and there were forty-eight, I'm sorry, forty-five accident reports taken as well. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions. I will say, this report, I, I have it ready to where, starting with the January's report, I'll be able to get this to Ron, so it'll be in the packet, and we'll keep month-to-month statistics going forward, but because we adjusted some of the categories throughout the year, it wouldn't let me carry them without pulling all the old stuff that doesn't need to be there. So we'll have a cleaner report going forward, beginning next month.
How do we compare to the year before? Do you know? Are we higher?
Our, our incident reports are lower. Traffic crashes stay about the same, most of our crashes are kind of side swipe, getting too close on the side streets. We have, we've had some people hit poles this last year, more than in the past. And the calls for service fluctuate greatly. I've seen, I've seen a number closer to five thousand. Seems like it's always over four thousand calls. And really, a lot of this is generated by how the officers capture it. An example I can give you is, there's one for vehicle tampering. We had, as you know, an instance where several cars were broken into, because they took them back to back, they carried us one incident. So it says one vehicle tampering, it was like, one incident that involved twelve cars. So some of this is driven by how the officer captures that data on scene.
What about the criminal? Are we higher or lower? At the same?
About the same. I, I give statistics to Cincinnati Magazine annually, and so at that time, they ask for specific categories. Vehicle theft, robberies, things like that. I know when I gave the statistics in April or May, we were a lot lower in all those categories. Thieves remain high, most of them are at U D F, most of them are also from items left in cars.
One of the things that I, I'm sure that people have on social media, there's, tends to be a fairly consistent concern for thefts and break-ins that are residential, like, you know, we share the information of what they see on their, on their door cameras and that kind of thing, or the numbers about their concerns about suspicious activity. I'm wondering if we can capture, as, as you said, that majority of them seem to be the convenience store as opposed to residential ones, but if we're able to capture weather, thefts and break-ins residentially, you are building out, we're staying safely.
Yeah, when they're, when they're reported to us, that's the important thing. So a lot of people will see something on, on their camera, but, and they'll share it with neighbors and friends, but they don't report it to us. When we, when we respond to a call, one of the ways we enter the data is we call it a beat, because we can't control what these fields are called, and we typically, it'll be a business, it'll be on the street. So if I say twenty-four forty Los Anavil, and it's a traffic stop, we capture that as on the street, it doesn't involve that resident, that address. Or if it's in owner-occupied, you know, business, rental, we do capture that data that way.
Any questions? End of report.
End of report. So congratulations to the Bengals. I was waiting, I was waiting.
I thought I was in good shape, but I've got some serious hypertension issues on the weekend. It's just, we're achieving big ones in here. There is soon to be hypertension. So we're going to, I think we're going to go, I'm.
I know, I'm.
We're, we're clear that we're supporting our problem in town. If it doesn't go away, we want, we'll want the other to go all the way. Hey, you're best.
Anyway, I have three pieces of legislation, but let's see. The first is resolution number twenty-two, four. I have a motion to read by title on.
Same.
This is a resolution designated records, managers, and training, designated needs, public officials, and a motion, and a second.
Motion.
Second.
This is what we discussed earlier, that you have an obligation as a public official to either attend training, or designate some of the training, sort of the two-year term of office, even though you may have changed your office in council, newly elected, they consider this is the one term. So what we're doing here is dotting, I think, cross these, we order tools to then, it does have a secondary benefit, and that one's having in-house people who are trained, want a record request in there. But the attorney general, the attorney, you all be trained, at least point one should be put on. This will designate Paul Bird, it will designate the newsman, Phil. What we do is we, we identify that it will be designated the office, so for some reason, Paul will leave us during this two-year term, automatically whoever can succeed or slot in there. If we don't make a motion, I don't have anyone. So if there's other questions, we'll just go over. Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hid?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Grantmore?
Yes.
And I want to read the second one, and have a little broader discussion. This is resolution number twenty-two, five. I need a motion to read by title on.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a resolution provided for the submission to the elector, a ten mill property levy, tax levy, to support firefighting and emergency services, the village coordinator, again, declaring an emergency, need a motion to approve as an emergency.
Same.
And a second.
Second.
Let me explain it back, because we touched on it a little bit during the administration report. At the last meeting, we S R certified to us how much revenue will be produced on a ten-mill continued levy for fire services. As we exited Little Miami Fire District, we anticipated we would have the passing levy to continue to collect revenues starting next calendar year. This calendar year will cover completely because of monies that are being drawn into Little Miami during our fall last year are being paid over to us to cover that service with your parks. So this starts with something new, January of next year. It's continuing levy. We projected ten mills, and we probably need, it came back instead, if we anticipated it would produce forty-five thousand two hundred and two dollars in April revenues. Our contract year for service is five hundred fifty thousand per year, goes up in the five years contract. We are anticipating receiving about a one hundred thousand dollar per year payment for five years from Little Miami Fire District. We say approximately one hundred, because they have to close their books, we'll then do the cash balance at the end of the year, we'll get our proportion share of that. We are receivables that are not yet identified, we get our proportion share of that. You may recall, there are two categories of personal property. That personal property, little man we want to keep, or we get a percentage of the value. Personal property, the day which we have sold and salvaged, we get our share of that when it's sold. The building will increase the average value, we get twenty-two point seven seven five percent combined with these numbers. Just recently, Little Miami Chief said, hey, there's a couple items that we put on the salvage list that we'd actually like to keep. And the proposal is to increase that payment by fifteen thousand dollars. I don't think everybody had the objection to that. So we need to lighten that up in Little Miami, we'll get that approximately one hundred thousand a year for five years, and then we need these levy monies to come in. So last meeting, we asked the auditor, certify the ten mills can be produced, because you have to do that first before you pass this legislation, to put it on the main primary ballot, and the deadline for filing is next Thursday, February twenty-two. The reason of the long explanation, when it came back to us and said, okay, it'll produce four hundred eighty-five thousand two hundred and two dollars, the estimated cost for homeowner with one hundred thousand dollar home is three hundred fifty dollars. Currently, as a member of Little Miami Fire Rescue District, a one hundred thousand dollar cost homeowner three hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. If you wonder if your fourteen-plus mills up here, down to ten mills, and actually you can hang twenty-five bucks more, forty-seven dollars more a year. And that's because the fourteen mills in Little Miami, this is what Melanchel points out, you pass the millage, you need more money, you pass another mill, you need more money, you pass another one. Over the years, what the auditor does is take the two-mill levy, if the property values go up, they actually make the two-mill levy hold up to six million. These adjustments, likely the big adjustment in Little Miami is millions that they have on the fire station. So while it's fourteen mills, the net cost right now is three twenty-three forty-nine, we are dropping to ten mills, but we're really not cutting present in taxes. So the question became, if we truly wanted to say we're cutting your taxes, what would that be? If we drop to nine point five mills, it would bring it to about the same rate as it's your current pay. Nine point five mills would generate four hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars, if I live early and say this is what it should be. Our cost to get is five fifty a year, one hundred for coverage. The unknown is, part of our contract, part of our silver, it says, you'll guarantee us that we see proposals to be sixty-four thousand dollars per year. We think they will, that receivable would be what they bill people for services. So if it turns out that they bill, it's ninety grand a year, we don't know. If they bill us thirty grand a year, we'll owe them one hundred thirty-four without particular year. So there's some, even though it's a little bit more, there's some levy going to technical to make sure we got all bets covered. If we want to go to nine point five, to be able to say that, this is not an increase in your taxes, it's not an increase. This again, literally, three hundred fifty dollars, if we drop down a half a mill, it should be seventeen dollars fifty cents, it's about a ten dollars. If I go all the way down to nine, produces four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars a year, we've got a big gap. But it is a tax. So the question for tonight is, if we want to go forward with the ten mills, put it on the ballot, if we want to drop back to, you know, or any number, it could be nine point four, nine point three. If we do, we have to pass the legislation and then ask again for certification, because our next meeting will not be February fourteenth, we have to come back in for a special meeting to put it down. Long explanation of what we're going to do. Discussion.
It sounds like we have thirty grand extra. But if we if we take it down to nine, somewhere in the nine, we're going to have fifteen extra, but then we have the possibility if we go back and ask more, if we don't meet the guarantee with.
So if we don't meet the guarantee of our general funds. And right now, we'll go well, but that surplus, if everything holds true, we'll. It gets back to the politics of, we can say we're dropping your taxes on fourteen mills and ten. But we're really incrementally increasing your taxes because this is a new levy. So if we want to say we balanced it as close as we can, go to nine and a half, nine point four, whatever, you give it down to that number, or do we say we want to do the ten? It's a little bit increased, but it provides that buffer with the increased cost to keep the chicken up during the holidays. Of course, also the unknown would be we project we're getting a hundred thousand dollars a year. I have no reason to believe we close out Little Miami, the numbers will be dressed differently. But that would change that.
And are we going to change up or down?
If it changes, it would probably down. But yeah, if it changes, it'll be because it has unforeseen expense at the end of the year. That wasn't appropriate. They actually projected to the auditor, it's a lie, that they would have actually more than. So they're projecting the private. We do not know what receivable.
I want to, as a board member, I'm unaware. Roger, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm unaware of any significant expense that popped up on that.
Given given the mood of the divorce, what's the likelihood that they would incur an expense they have perceived between now and then?
They wouldn't. They would not do it. They wouldn't do anything to us.
If I understand it right, they can't just have an expense that's not budgeted or be approved by the board. There's a certain line.
They they approve every adjustment to their budget by the board. Whereas we approve uh where we have more flexibility and can move money around between line items outside of the salary line and all the other ones. We do that all the time, that every time they adjust a line item, it does.
So everything is already in the budget. They can.
Their lines are set.
They've already approved.
They want the board to approve any any.
I understand if they have a line item that's got fifteen thousand dollars appropriated, they spent ten, they can still spend five within that, makes sense.
This is the first time I've ever come across something where you hear people saying, we're lowering your village in taxes. We're lowering your village in taxes. I thought actually you need to protect your taxes. And that's the first time I've ever seen this. So I was very.
It's just because of property values, we agree so much.
Yeah, I didn't realize that it was ongoing. You go from two to one point six, it might be.
It rose in the village.
Yeah.
So you'll see a lot of times, literally, uh this is not a tax increase because it's two mill. And what's the new two? It's invisible.
Based on a higher property.
Unless you renew, right?
Truth in taxes.
Correct, yeah, which we always do.
That's why they start this year, this is the truth in taxes. That if you say, well, it's the same village, well, it is the same village. And the cost to a homeowner is a little bit higher. At ten mills, it is twenty seven dollars a year higher. At ten mills, it's twenty seven dollars higher. We cover our costs. If we start coming down, we skate that number more and more. Even at nine and a half, it's still going to be nine bucks more a year. It's still will be an increase in taxes. But nine and a half starts to invest stress on that gap that you then can rely upon to be general fund and should they rely upon the general fund if we have that swing collections.
Couple of questions, uh how long is this levy run?
It's continuous.
It is continuous, okay. And then um I'm assuming this isn't the same verb or uh I'm sorry, language as what's going to be on the ballot? Because it will, let's say, come like be collected in twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
About that, okay, okay, that's what I'm checking.
The ballot will say yes or no, intent mill, continuing levy for fire service and medical services. First election, change. The one thing that I want to get with it was, um we talked about the EMS billing collections. We had a hell of a time getting with the billing company that counts to figure out how much is actually generated. It was, you you asked two different people, actually, guess the same person, but over two different ages, you give two different answers. So I I I think your part is confident that they'll generate, that they think they'll generate. But I'm not as confident as they are that they're actually achieving. So what that means would be, I think there's a high likely to reduce the levy enhancement. We're going to pay something.
And that's before the three percent increase, how that happened later on.
So.
What's the difference in dollar amount between ten mill to the hundred thousand dollar amount? Between ten mill and nine and a half?
Uh ten mill is three hundred fifty dollars on a hundred thousand. Again, it's linear, it's ten mills, it's thirty five dollars per mill, every cost. So you can drop thirty five bucks off that three hundred fifteen dollars for a nine mill. For a nine, it would produce four hundred thirty six thousand dollars when five fifty is needed. And again, we're relying upon that money coming into Little Miami with this new stuff. He said that puts stress on the general fund. Without it, it would be sixty four thousand. The nine and a half produces four sixteen, nine and a half saves seventeen dollars and fifty cents. So it's three hundred thirty two dollars and fifty cents linearly.
How does this levy, or if if the fire, right, or rescue, this levy, this extra money is a surplus and then rolls over to the general fund or rolls over?
It always stays in that fire fund. Because it's a dedicated fund, it can only be used for fire and for medical services. Correct. That's important education, right? Because I think a lot of the concerns about taxes going up is that, oh, you know, possibly used. It's dedicated.
So then it's more worth it to go lower and have to take from other funds that we would have, or other levies we have, and to go higher under less protection?
You can not only take it from the general. Right. So we have four uh general fund levies. We have, we'll have a fire levy, a police levy, and a street and sidewalk use. You cannot take money, can't take any revenue generating from the police and the street and sidewalks, supplement anything beyond police and sidewalks.
Correct.
But we do have a surplus of a lot of money.
And you're standing just towards the nine hundred thousand dollars. When I started with the village, it was less than half that. I think it was actually around two hundred thirty thousand dollars. When, Ron, I think you can speak to.
You've seen me. So we we started on this journey, two hundred thousand dollars on the hold. And in two years, we were able to get out of the hold, and then we continued to build. I'm concerned about what this levy will do to us overall financially. However, there's a lot to be said about perception. As a homeowner, the service that we're going to get is going to be very different from all we had in building. Just from a standpoint of response to this type of thing. So there's a there's a case we made that is a lesser service because it's not right down the street. The thing that I personally have a hard time dealing with is paying more money for that service. There's also risk involved. So I am confident, it may be it's a fool's mission, I don't think so. But I think that we have the talent and the ability to focus to increase our revenue through economic development. If we stay focused, we can do the kinds of things that we think we could do. And I've been talking about this with most of you for the last four or five years now, and we're hoping we can do that. So do we take the rest and make this eleven and a half mill levy now with the hope, and it's its hope, it is hope, that we're going to be able to make that up by increasing our revenues? That's for economic development. We talked this evening when the administration's committee. The income tax receipts going up because Rita is really, really, really good. Looking at things such as Airbnb stuff to make sure that people are paying taxes on things when they generate business in our village, all of that adds to the pot. So if we're if we're good at our jobs and can do that, this nine and a half mills is a risk, but I think it's a doable risk. And it also says to our residents, we get it, this isn't as good as what we had. We think it's good, we think it'll be fine, but we're also giving you credit for that in in terms of trying to lower your taxes. I'm shocked that it's more money. It's like, man, we can get hit over the head every time we do something different here. But I but I think there's value in recognizing the people that we understand this, but we're just not going to continue to keep raising taxes on them. The other thing that I that I would mention is, we and I have this conversation every couple of months because I'm always bringing it up, how do we come off as even a levy? How do we get rid of these things? That's a lot of money that we're missing, that we really have to make up in other forms rather than. So really, the way you guys have played this is, what's the reaction for the residents? Going to be, how do you feel about it as homeowners? And then was from an administration standpoint, how are we going to sustain financially sustain the village? Financially, I guess it's been for three times. But that's the that's the real struggle, honestly.
There's one thing, I, the way I've been, I thought, been learning this over the last few years now is just because we have a million dollars in here amounts in our in our general fund. That's really where we want to start again, right? Because isn't that kind of what is common practice that we've had so much? I don't remember the language, but it's like, this was what we've been working for, and now we're here. Now we're actually, we can rest on that. It's like a, it's it's like our.
It's six months operating.
Yeah, it's our foundation, that's what we're supposed to be about, the state, all those common practices. So really, it's not, it's just, it's the cushion, it's the money in the mattress, it's the, it's not something we we just have to tap into a while. Now, now we report.
Approved reserve as opposed to.
Six month expense is the best one, is the best practice. Six months.
Really? So we believe the reserve is really. And it's not not big amounts, it's consistent percentage year over year. So it's, we don't think it's a flood. For a couple of years, we've had, I'm sure about this.
We gotta get a vote for sure, is that, is that just insane?
Well, the, I mean, you have to go back and think about what happened in two thousand eight. And I was I was on council at the time, but you had lots of people lose their jobs. You had lots of people, all of their property, all of our tax stuff went down. Property values tanked. As Andy pointed out, meaning today, property values have not recovered from two thousand eight where they were prior to the recession. If that were to happen today, we would be in a much better position with another recession because we have our reserve. In two thousand eight, they didn't have that, and what happened is they started arguing from the fire levy, which was illegal to do. That practice, and it was illegal, and that's how we ended up being in the hole. Crisis seems to happen year after year after year, if you've been here about thirty years. And it's, it goes through cycles.
You've been there twice.
Yeah. I know for me, as a former business owner, rather than fuel, there is a, I know this is anecdotal, but when you set, you do set, I I forget what I call it, just just the cash that you want to have on hand. I never knew it was called a reserve, you know, some municipalities. And once you have that for a business that you're tapping into to maybe make a bigger investment here and there, but you know it's coming back, there's a sense of freedom comes from that. The value of that reserve staying there or being there and kind of fluctuating as, to me, that's the value. If we can keep it there, there's a, and I know I can't put a number to it, or what does it really work? But it's very, it's very free, and if you mention stress, that's what starts to happen.
The fire merger is a very good example of that, Roger, because when when we did the fire merger, we were in hold, and we felt like there was no other choice for us. When this last thing happened two years ago, we had money. We were able to determine our own destiny if indeed we need to leave on that reserve to do something against or what we're doing.
I uh so in my experience, what uh what the thing to do is, is to ask the finance committee or your financial people to define what a prudent reserve is, all right? So your customers say, well, prudent reserve is expensive expenses, all right? If you have that, then you know, you have questions about, what about this nine hundred? You know, nine hundred thousand dollars that you have, you know, we, can we either give that back to the taxpayers or can we build a monument to the mayor, all right? Whatever it is, right? But you say, no, well, actually, our prudent reserve is that amount of money, that that's six months. But the thing is, is we have to define it. That that's my opinion on it. Define what the prudent reserve is, we don't necessarily do that tonight or whatever. That's something that, you know, moving forward, it's not a set amount of money. It's a principle of, you know, it's a six months expenses, it's a three months expenses, it's a year expense, you know? To get that defined, then you're able to speak to it. Uh the the second thing that I bring up is, I really like how well articulated Rob also in this whole thing. I agree with the the question of going down to nine or five is still being increased, though I think it is kind of a, you know.
It's a.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, the the public perception of that, I mean, is there a difference between ten and nine point five? It's still increased.
So I I I look at this from a perspective. What he's saying is that if since he came in, right, he went up from three to nine, right? So there, there we say they were on a streak of going up. That means over the next two years, it'll be going even higher and higher if they are keeping up the way that he's doing great job. They're really doing a great job, administrators. And therefore, that means that within three years, we'll be by three times that amount. Why would we go ahead? I'm 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 not saying, I'm I'm exaggerating. Obviously, it's going to get to a certain point, but we're doing a good job. So we're sitting on nine hundred, why should we put something in that is going to be forever at ten or even a nine and a half? Let's go wild, let's go to eight and a half, and let's tell people we're cutting because we're getting less services. And then if we see within the next few years that we, that he, that the administration is not climbing that much, or not having that much extra to be able to notch off of the general funds, then we'll put in a new levy or we'll switch this over to higher levy. But if we are actually on such a streak where we're going up, why are we making people pay more at the end of the day? Let's, and we're getting worse service, let's go lower. Let's say, yes, the service is seven minutes instead of three minutes, it's going to cost you less. We are going to go ahead and notch off for the general fund because our general fund is growing very nicely. We are gonna go ahead and notch off of the general fund because our general fund is growing very nicely. And then if in, in two years, we see that we do need it, then we could go ahead and put on the ballot again for something better than that. But at this point, we should make people feel comfortable to feel that, yeah, we got a cut in taxes. It's not exactly the way it was told. And then after two years, people look at it as, again, it's being, this is serviced, 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 seven. We're not managing it. We need to be able to up it, and then we'll put onto the ballot to up it. I don't see reason now to put in forever something that's higher for worse service. When we, meaning the general fund is keep on growing and growing, and we're sitting on nine hundred, and within two years, we're sitting on a lot more.
Because it's not going to be, the reserve won't grow like that. Would they cut expenses so drastically to build the reserve? I think carryover from last year to this year is less than a hundred thousand dollars added to the reserve, alright?
We didn't grow the reserve.
Right. So it's flat year over year. That trajectory...
We didn't tell the reserve to cover up all these expenses. Tagging that, telling that part, we were the prudent reserve.
There's a principle as well when you define what your prudent reserve is, that you don't go above your prudent reserve. That money goes back or it gets spent on something that the residents are willing that they want by the line of three years. Or, I'm sorry, I don't think so. But the, the point is, if you have a well-defined what your prudent reserve is, you can even write into your, to your ordinances or, you know, make resolutions that basically say going above the prudent reserve is not allowed. That the money has to go back a bit, forty percent.
So one of the, one of the things about, that I would say to permanent levy, the council can always make decisions to lower that. We can stay on the books. At least that's always the fire district's setup. They were always afraid to make it less than fourteen point five million because they wanted to have the ability to collect that. But said, hey, someday, if we wanna cut it to twelve, we can do that. So we have the, you guys have the ability to make that decision at some point. So it's not like we're stuck with it forever if we do that. We also know, and we've also said, that we believe this current solution for the fire department is probably not our permanent solution. We hope before we get to years four and five with that DPS contract, that we won't see that three percent increase because we're doing something else. So that, and that, when you said that about the three percent increase, listen, I don't remember to say that. So there's, it just depends on what kind of gamblers we all are in, in dealing with this at this point. Is, is it worth, is to their point, is it, is an increase an increase? Or is anybody going to listen to the consternation that we've gone through to try and make this whole thing out for people? And that's, to me, that's, that's kind of a brotherness because we've been forced into this and not a part of the doing. And here we are again with the residents gonna take another shot with a dish of honey for less than all we have. And to me, that is, that is the one thing, if Miss Oyes stands at that podium and says to me, Mr. Hirsch, why are you raising my taxes? I'm getting a louse. We have to be able to answer that. And, and, and I know there's all kinds of economic issues and talking about expenses increases and stuff like that. If you could say, to answer that question, a perception is a huge piece of us, I think. So, and honestly, I'm telling you, I might be sitting here three years from now saying, okay, guys, sorry, we've got a thousand dollar deficit. We need to raise taxes. Well, I'm gonna feel stupid at that point. It's a risk that you could take. But is that a risk to take?
It's interesting. When you, when you move forward as a government body, and we've all kind of seen this in the past, it, it's a lot harder, it's a lot harder for government to give back money than it is for them to try to tax you more. And this is a tough one because there, there's some risks there. You know, when I, when I look from my industry, I really see an increase in property values, which means an increase of revenues. And then I look at the, the risk we'd be taking, like, say, dropping half a mill. And, you know, that's when, as a group and as an administrative body, that's the point, when we have to do it, is when we sharpen our pencils the best. And so I'm kind of weighing right now, you know, do we go ahead and take a risk? Which, it's a risk, but I, I don't think it's a huge risk going forward. I think we, I feel like we've got at least two more years of pretty good appreciation in the real estate market. After that, it's a guess by anybody. I mean, I'm in the thick of it right now. Losing my voice because I'm in real estate and I'm talking every day. And I see the prices just going up and up and up, which is gonna erode our income, you know, our spendable income. Because our wages are gonna go up, you know, for, for the village. Our materials are gonna go up. There's, there's some inflation out there. But the fact of the matter is that I think the income's gonna outweigh the inflation. And, and I agree, people need to see that we've got an eye on the ball. You know, we know that our taxes are pretty high here. And, and we're, I don't think the risk is huge going forward, that we're not gonna have that money going forward. And, you know, people need to know that we're paying attention. We're not asleep at the wheel. And as council people, we know that you guys are working your ass off. The, the economy has helped us a little bit, but, but you guys are the ones that sharpened the pencil when it had to be done. And I believe that, that we can do that again if we have to. And so I, I would say, hey, let's, let's look at, at sharpening our pencils and making sure we're not just holding on to the money. It's, it's too much of a safety net because that's, that's what government has done in the past, and people are kind of tired of that.
Given the public perception, my feeling is that if we're gonna do that, it needs to be lower than nine point five because you're still raising it.
Yeah, and my, I mean, my, my thought is even, even if it's a nickel, even if it's a nickel lower every year, at least, at least...
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's my feeling on this issue. I mean, to do the nine five. I'm not saying that I...
Terry, what do we need for a nickel?
I'm glad you guys are the ones that vote. I'm hoping it's not gonna be a three-three split. Alright, really am. But the, my feeling is that if we're debating ten versus, versus nine point five, that we're debating a lot of them.
No, no, I just threw that out there. It's a joke.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I meant you when I said you. I meant the body.
So the, so the, so the decision you guys need to make is whether I move forward with that. If there's, if there's a chance we don't want to do that, we need to get the nine, the nine one, the nine and a quarter of certified. Terry's prepared to do that this evening. But what that means is we could come back next week, next Monday, I guess.
You have to come back this week because it's the S B five person.
So you guys can pass nine, nine and a half or ten. So, you know, I'm not suggesting we delay the decision, but there's a lot of people who can think about this more. Don't give any opportunity to look more specifically at more of the topics in mind.
Nine should produce four hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars in savings.
Right. They, they do a calculation of ninety-five percent off that.
So it should, it will cause a gap. It will cause a gap.
Probably what would?
Nine will cause nine. It's five fifty years of service for like a four thirty-six, you know, anticipating a hundred. There's a gap. There's a gap, and that's like getting into sixty-four thousand. So it's the putting the truth out there on all, but there certainly is a lot to be said for we lower your taxes. A lot to be said for that. But we've got to be prepared for lower taxes when we still have, if we do that, our reserve. I, I would caution you on the terminology of comparing service. Use it to our worst service. I don't know how you go out and sell your residents on voting for fireworks for worst service. We went to a block that it is a different service, but it's a service model we can afford. And it's a service model that will provide service. It is not the same service that people, Mr. Hirsch, it's not.
Right. I mean, we, we want a Cadillac, but we can't afford a Cadillac.
But the key is, this is find your solution. It's gotta be a continuing budget, but it's a find your solution. There has got to be, and even then, you need cheap, so there's gotta be a current way to do this.
So Terry, it looks like if we're, we would be somewhere between four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty-six savings. A lot of hundred percent questions.
That's the nine?
Yeah, we'll go with the four thirty-six for now. Four hundred and thirty-six thousand.
If you want to look at those options, what we need to do is table this. And then we enter the agenda, the nine, the nine point five, and has a certain occasion, get that back in the order. And we'll get it back in order, read the beam. It doesn't need to be more than ten fifteen, I mean. Just say that's the only one to throw in that.
I think I'd like to make that motion. I need to think about it. I'd like to stew and talk a lot maybe.
Should we cover a bit? It's a little bit pedantic perhaps, but do nine, nine and a quarter, nine and a half, right?
Just, yeah, if we're clearly on nine, have we figured out what the, what the whole we're expanding with versus what we're paying for?
It should be three hundred and fifteen.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so then that is below.
That is less.
Right, about nine point three is the motion.
I'm looking at it as not saving much, right? The difference between three fifty and three thirty-two a year. Is it really worth this, to do all this extra work? I know I've told residents that you're gonna save four mills, your taxes are gonna go down. You know, I've got to explain all that, but when I look at it, when I'm gonna spend three fifty versus three thirty-two, that's what, eighteen dollars?
Eighteen dollars.
Is it worth it?
I, I agree that it's not that, I'm, I'm thinking myself as a homeowner, it's, it's not that much. What I'm, what I'm concerned about though is I do get quite just apathetic and pissed off at the same time when I hear messaging, you know, from politicians about how we're lowering, we're lowering, and how much more. Maybe that's not that big of a deal, but just the principle of it is what, but yeah, I'm, I'm with you in that. I'm glad you guys are voting for it. And I don't have to, there, there is a challenge really.
Like, you're making a political argument, the test has passed. There's value in saying, let's look at nine, nine and a quarter and nine point five, so no one can say we're rushing, we're rushing it. And it's because of the nature of, well, you have to tell me what you want to do first, and I'll tell you what you can do second. I mean, old school, we would just say, let's just go nine, all fair rock. But no, now I have to do this three process. So there is, there's some benefit in saying, we didn't just come here tonight, get the ten in a rush. We look at nine, nine and a quarter and nine point five, and we waited out to say, you know, is this a cup of coffee a month? Is this one Starbucks a month more? Yeah, it is an increase. But again, when you stack it all up, you say, look, we've gotta make the case for sustainable fire services. We've negotiated contracts for sustainable fire services. We've got certainty for the next five years. And there's some risk. We may not get to sixty-four thousand. We've gotta draw it out of the check. But we've looked at it, we, we're willing to come back on an extra night to do the right thing until it's done. There's a motion to do that, as you're saying.
Second.
All clear.
Aye.
So what we just done is table that. Now I'm gonna do this next legislation, folks, and we're gonna come back and revisit these other two by title only. So. The next thing.
Does your head belong? Do we need a motion to, for the nine, nine, nine point five?
We gotta get through these two per, this two per. So resolution number twenty twenty-two dash six, I need a motion read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
So this is Terry. This is a resolution authorized by the Village Administrative Committee and submit an application of anticipating the entire public work submission, state capital approval and for book of transportation proof programs and to execute contracts as required. We need a motion as second.
Motion.
Second.
This is authorized as Mr. Hirsch to make applications for grant funding for capital improvements. It's the first step, state requires and county requires. Right now, if we wind up by Hamel's potential project, correct? This is broad enough, the Hamel could be in there, find another one to do in there during state capital budget period. There's a question we will call.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Jamie?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Grantmore?
Yes.
Now I'd like a motion to add these two additional pieces of legislation to the agenda. Uh, the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash seven, twenty twenty-two dash eight, which is a nine point five and nine twelve, that'd be required. Did you want to do a nine and a quarter?
Why not?
So we have three pieces, seven, eight, three.
So moved.
Second.
All clear.
Aye.
Yeah, our charter says that as long as legislation is made available prior to meeting, we can read by title only. Obviously, this was not available prior to meetings since it's almost nine o'clock. We're just seeing it for the first time. So if my voice can hold out, we'll read these three.
Oh.
What, pass it in the first place?
Pass those in the very, but we have to read the entire order. If, if, if my voice goes out, I think Ms. Smith, he would go.
We can pass it, pass it this way.
We'll take that part. So resolution number twenty twenty-two dash seven, a resolution regarding the necessity of levying a tax in excess of ten millipatience equal to nine point five mills requesting the county audit for certified matters in connection with which it is required. Whereas this council anticipates levying a tax in excess of ten millipatience as described herein. And whereas pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five oh three, the higher rise code, this council is required to certify to the county audit for a resolution requesting the county audit to certify certain matters in connection with such tax levy. Now therefore, we are resolved with the counsel of the village of Calhoun, County Ryan, back. Section one, pursuant to provisions of section fifty-seven oh five point one, the capital law of the higher rise code, is necessary that tax be levied in excess of ten millipatience with benefit of the village of Calhoun. For the purpose of contracting for firefighting and emergency services to the village of Calhoun, entering not exceeding nine point five mills for each one bill evaluation, which amounts to nine dollars and fifty cents for each one thousand dollars evaluation continued in a period of years, which is a new levy of nine point five mills. Section two, this is a new five point nine point five levy. It shall be levied on the real property located with the village of Calhoun, which is siphoned solely with the handling of the county line. Section three, the question of passage of said tax levy shall be submitted to the electors of the village in primary election to be held on May three, twenty twenty-two. If the majority of the electors vote against such election, said tax levy shall first be placed upon the twenty twenty-two tax list and due for the first election in county year twenty twenty-three. Pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five oh three, the higher rise code, the orders required to certify this council, the total current tax valuation of the village of Calhoun, a dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the number where it was specified in section one. And the clerk of council is hereby directed to certify for quick, a copy which must be issued by the county auditor at early as possible time. So the county auditor may certify such matters in accordance with section fifty-seven oh five oh three to be able to properly consider, pass and file a resolution concerning the necessity of the consideration of May three, twenty twenty-three primary election. According to section three purposes of certification, we place this levy on the ballot. Meeting the fiscal chiefs of the village, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for probably all safety and welfare, which will take effect in a few months. On the motions, pass this in person.
Passes in person.
Second.
Second.
And roll, roll both.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Jamie?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Grant-Hart?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eight, we're actually losing declaring for assessing levying a tax in excess of ten millipatations equal to nine mils and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection with an emergency. Whereas this council anticipates levying a tax in excess of ten millipatations described herein. And whereas pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five oh three, the Highway Code, this council is required to certify to the county auditor a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify certain matters in connection with some of the warrants levied. Now therefore, we are resolved with the council of the village governor to call the county auditor back. Pursuant to the provisions of section fifty-seven oh five one nine I, the Highway Code is necessary that tax be levied in excess of the ten millipatations for the benefit of the village governor for the purpose of contracting for firefighting and emergency services to the village governor at a rate not exceeding nine mils for each one dollar valuation, which amounts to nine dollars for each one thousand dollars valuation for the two period of years, which is a new levy of nine cents. This new levy, this new nine million levy shall be levied. This is a new nine million levy and shall be levied on all real property with the village governor, which is cited solely with the Hamilton County line. The question of the passage of said tax levy shall be submitted to electors of the village. The primary election to be held on May three, twenty twenty-two. Approved by majority, electors voting in such election. Said tax levy shall first be placed upon the twenty twenty-two tax list and due for the first election in calendar year twenty twenty-three. Pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five oh three, the Highway Code, county auditors hereby request to certify to this council the total current tax valuation of the village governor in the dollar amount of revenue that will be generated by the number of real specified in section one. The clerk of council is hereby directed to certify forthwith a copy of this resolution to the county auditor at earliest possible time, so the county auditor may certify such matters in court as well. Section fifty-seven oh five oh three, to be able to appropriately consider, pass and file a resolution assessing consideration for May three, twenty twenty-two primary election. Section five, in order to meet the statute requirements of certification, places levy on the ballot to meet the fiscal needs of the village, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for public health, safety, welfare, which will take effect immediately. The motion passes in emergency, second, and call our votes.
Motion.
So second.
Second.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Pass.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Grant-Hart?
Yes.
And resolution number twenty twenty-two dash nine, the resolution declaring for assessing levying a tax in excess of ten millipatations equal to nine point two five and requesting county auditor to certify matters in connection with an emergency. Whereas this council anticipates levying a tax in excess of ten millipatations described herein. And whereas pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five oh three, the Highway Code, this council is required to certify to the county auditor requesting county auditor to certify certain matters in connection with such a tax levy. Now therefore, we are resolved with the council of the village governor to call the county auditor back. Section one, pursuant to provisions of section fifty-seven oh five one nine I, the Highway Code, is necessary that tax be levied in excess of the ten millipatations for the benefit of the village governor for the purpose of contracting for firefighting and emergency services to the village governor at a rate not exceeding nine point two five mils for each one dollar valuation, which amounts to nine dollars and twenty-five cents for each one thousand dollars valuation for continued period of years, which is a new levy of nine point two five mils. Section two, this is a new nine point two five million levy and shall be levied on all real property located within the village governor, which is cited solely with the Hamilton County line. Section three, the question of the passage of said tax levy shall be submitted to electors of the village at the primary election to be held on May three, twenty twenty-two. Approved by majority, electors voting in such election, said tax levy shall first be placed upon the twenty twenty-two tax list and due for the first election in calendar year twenty twenty-three. Pursuant to section fifty-seven oh five point oh three, the Highway Code, county auditors require request to certify to this council the total current tax valuation of the village governor in dollar amount of revenue that will be generated by the number of mils specified in section one. The clerk of council is hereby directed to certify forthwith a copy of this resolution to the county auditor at earliest possible time, so the county auditor may certify such matters in court as well. Fifty-seven oh five oh three, to be able to appropriately consider, pass and file a resolution assessing consideration of May three, twenty twenty-two primary election. Section five, in order to meet the statute or the price of certification, place this levy on the ballot and meet the fiscal needs of the village, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for public health, safety, welfare, which will take effect immediately. We, the motion passes in emergency, a second, and then roll call votes.
Motion to pass as an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Grant-Hart?
Yes.
That's all I have to do. Executive session is very briefly moderated. We want to do the executive session last. Okay, that's the preference sounds, okay. So, Mr. Van Marke, you have the floor to sit.
For the Fire Board?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, exactly.
Uh, no, we did not meet.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lanzier and Mr. Van Marke have the floor to sit.
The next, the Fire Board meeting will be Wednesday, February sixteen, twenty twenty-two, at sixteen at the Gulf Manor. Mayor Shelton has asked, asking if I have a problem with them moving that airbox. So I would try and, I don't know, it's a side of the country.
Questions? Mr. Fisher? On their report.
Do you need a, a feedback hour? If you'd like, would like feedback, be happy to do that, if you really care. That's the last meeting in the Gulf Manor, it'll be a memorable night.
What a lovely set off from them.
I didn't think people would care.
Rubbing dirt in the wound. Sir, planning commission to report, uh, next meeting is Monday, February seventh, at six thirty. I gave them, thank you, Mr. Fisher, any questions? I had said during the mayor's report, my plans with regard to should we commission the community edge committee? I think said, any comments or any thoughts concerning the federal engagement?
Education I do, if you want to hear it.
Yes, please. Before you do that, the only thing that I would like to do is work with Ms. Chaney, Ms. Snyder, Mr. Fisher. All right? Um, on, within that committee, because we're talking about moving it possibly during the day. I just need to have a discussion on that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that too because in terms of submitting and membership, it, it would be. So, yeah.
I have one, uh, just to point to, Gulf Manor had a recent board meeting, and we're kind of planning out the year, we've got some really cool stuff kind of brewing, but I can't, can't. It's not nothing solid, but pretty exciting meeting, so I'm looking forward to it. Tell you what, that's about later.
You're good. I'm looking forward to hearing about it. All right, the finance committee, Mr. Fisher.
Uh, I think the majority of finance was rehashed tonight. The only thing that I will really kind of highlight is that, uh, we discussed the economic divide, excuse me, Economic Development Revitalization Fund. Uh, Mr. Lanzier worked at the Center for Local Government to kind of poll other communities who are participants in that organization. Uh, mostly just found that the Village of Silverton is the most active when it comes to that. Uh, and he's going to meet with, Mr. Lanzier's going to meet with Tom Carroll from Silverton to get some additional guidance and continue the conversation within finance. Uh, our funding conversations continue, still waiting on finalizations of some project options. Uh, and then, uh, Rita Tax Collection is, well, it's season starting now. Uh, Monday, April eighteenth is due date unless you have estimated tax or extensions filed. That's the fifteenth, end of report.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Fisher, any questions? All right, a couple announcements. Uh, our next council meeting will be Monday, February fourteenth. Uh, other than the emergency one we may have, we're a little bit, we need to turn a little upset that now or we can do certification. All this. I'll be right back.
Try to do the state now.
Because everybody, any objection to that? Seven thirty. All right, we'll stay at Monday, the thirty-first. I have a, what? We've only been a few minutes. Danny, what's the soonest we can beat on Monday?
Uh, I'll do six second. I just got to give permission.
Set up with everybody?
Sure.
All right, six o'clock, Monday, thirty-first. Following that are our next regular meeting, Monday, February fourteenth. Lot records coming out at five thirty P M. Executive at six P M, council at seven P M. Then our next meeting, uh, will be February twenty-eighth. Financial audit meeting at five thirty, finance at six P M, council at seven P M. Are there any other announcements? With that, I ask for a motion to go to executive session for others. Or is, could you do an pursuant process motion, just make a motion to set that special meeting at six P M on?
Summon.
Second.
Call this in favor.
Aye.
Objection, this, this will be a motion, would you say a new session discuss potential purchase in or sale of real estate? You can, roll call votes. Fair motion. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Fisher. Sorry.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Grant-Hart?
Yes.